February 3rd, 2020. This meeting will be livestreamed. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, one new correspondence item and one site development plan recommendation report. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Oh, Mr. Newberry.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Helfry?
Here.
Commissioner Levitt? Excuse me. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gargnani?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty? Commissioner Depler? Commissioner Simpson? Chair Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Worther? Mayor Boland?
Get ahead of myself. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Helfry, second by Commissioner Gregg Nani. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Does the department have any opening remarks?
Thank you.
Brings us to the public comment session. Mr. Newberry.
Appears I have no speaker cards.
Mr. Newberry?
That gentleman's a representative for one of the public hearings, so.
Okay. All right, moving on to our public hearing. In the city of Wildwood, public hearings are truly intended to accept comments and question concerns concerning these items. Since this is a public hearing, it is only intended to provide information on these requests. No action is planned on these items tonight, and consideration of them is to be taken no earlier than February 18th, 2020. The city's Department of Planning will address the comments, questions, and concerns that are raised tonight and include them as part of their formal recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Public hearings are conducted as described in the handout provided on the table in the reception area along with information on these matters. Commission will allow all parties adequate time to present their positions and ask that you respect all opinions by other speakers and avoid interrupting anyone during their time at the podium. Anyone wanting to speak or receive future information on these items should fill out a speaker's card and leave it with Mr. Newberry. In addition, information on these items can be found at the city's website at www.cityofwildwood.com. The commission would like to thank you for your cooperation and participation in tonight's hearing. Mr. Newberry.
PZ 19-19, Mary McCarthy, 7 Deerfield Ridge Road, Wildwood, Missouri 63005, care of Power Home Solar, 209 Hughes Lane, St. Charles, Missouri 63301. A request for a conditional use permit in the NU Non-Urban Residence District, street address 7 Deerfield Ridge Road, locator number 20X620014, for the installation of roof-mounted solar panels which are to be so situated on the dwelling as to be visible from an adjoining roadway. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.090, NU Non-Urban Residence District Regulations of the City of Wildwood Zoning Ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the panel's placement on the front-facing area of the dwelling's roof which abuts a defined roadway, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, before beginning the proceedings associated with the public hearing, the Department of Planning would like to introduce into the record the following items. The city's charter, the city of Wildwood master plan, Chapter 415 of the Code of Municipal Ordinances, the zoning ordinance, the file that has been developed and maintained by the Department of Planning regarding this particular petition, and all contents contained therein, and any additional evidence, testimony, or items that are offered as part of tonight's hearing. The department does also want to mention that the trustee, one of the trustees for this particular subdivision, did provide information relative to this petition today. That information has been placed at your chair's for your review tonight. And with the chair's permission, I believe Mr. Newberry has a few slides relative to this particular site that he's prepared to provide to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Department's prepared just a few slides, the first of which is an area map identifying the parcel in the lighter blue color here, just to give you an idea of where it's located within the city off of Babler Park Drive or Highway BA towards the northern intersection of that state road with State Route 109. The second is just a zoomed-in aerial shot of the home and the property. You can see towards the bottom of the slide is the cul-de-sac area where the photographs that will follow were taken. And then this is a side-by-side of the roof plan with the showing the placement, proposed placement of the panels next to an aerial shot of the property. And we can come back to this for discussion. Just a few photographs. This is from the driveway looking towards the home. You can see the driveway is higher than the home from an elevation standpoint. And our projector is not cooperating.
Hi, my name's Ron. I'm with Power Home Solar. I'm the sales consultant that met with Ms. Mary McCarthy. Upon arrival to her residence from this cul-de-sac circle there, her house has actually sunk down pretty deep below where the ground level is at. The tree obscures the view of the house. Only time you really do see it is in fall and wintertime. Spring and the rest of the year, it is obscured, so therefore, the view of the solar panels are blocked pretty much most of the year. Haven't dealt with this very much, but her electric bill is approximately $1,600 a month, and it is going to go up from there. This is the only way that she can obtain solar freedom and get away from AMUe from being able to increase her charges. It's actually a good deal for her, and I hope that you guys plan on approving the design of the solar panels for her.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Chair, any comments?
Seeing none, no comments. Mr. Newberry?
Mr. Chair, could I just finish the couple of photos I have so you can get a full understanding? Then the last one is just of the private street looking to the south, standing at the driveway. I don't know if we got into this one very much before the projector shut down, but this is just standing at the grassy area in the middle of the cul-de-sac to show you the two driveways for the two different homes at the end of that cul-de-sac. From the center or of the center? This is standing at the center of the cul-de-sac.
Commissioner Levitt.
We got the information on the indentures that states that any change like this needs to be approved by the trustees. Has that action taken place, is my first question?
Not yet. The representative from the solar company has been advised that that would need to be received by the city as it prepares its recommendation report at the next meeting that the commission will hear the department's recommendation.
But as far as we know, he hasn't gone to the trustees yet?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. How many homes are in this, are covered by these indentures? In the overhead picture, it shows a house pretty close. Have we heard anything from that homeowner, or do we plan to?
We did our normal notification procedure with the postcard and a posting of the site. We've not received any comments from those who received those postcards.
My last question, if we had any comments related to that from Mrs. McCarthy?
Regarding?
As she said, "This is what my neighbor thinks," or "This is what the trustees think."
No, the department's received no feedback such as that.
Okay.
And Mr. Levitt, at least at the time the indentures were finalized, this was a 15-lot
Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes, I was just going to answer Mr. Levitt's question. There's about 15 or 16 houses in that subdivision because it goes, you go up and they start numbering on the right and go all the way, and I think about 12 or 15 houses. It's one street.
Mayor Boland?
What is the name of the subdivision?
Deerfield.
So, Mr. Newberry, the reason we're looking at this is because you can see the panels from the street?
That's correct.
If you go, could you go to your ground shot? If we were to screen that view with some lower trees, flowering trees, dogwood, things like that, it would block this out even more because the view angle is at the bottom of the tree instead of the top of the tree. And that would pretty much resolve the issue screening-wise. Commissioner Helfry?
Regarding the diagrams that we have in our packet, it shows that the driveway, if you look at the triangle that you have showing right now, the driveway is the top, correct, of the house as it sits right now? And then one of the drawings shows that that is the front of the residence. Is that correct? It looks to me that the driveway is on the side of the residence, but I could very well be wrong. I'm a little confused.
I believe that's the way it's labeled. I noticed that earlier today as well.
It looks to me that that one that's labeled "front of the residence" is actually probably the driveway side of the residence, and the front of the residence is probably to the side?
No, the front of the residence is along, this is the front, right there. You go in, you go down the hill to the right, and this is the garage on the right, and it's the side and through the roof.
Right, but if you look at this drawing, it's, this should be the front of the house, correct? And this is the driveway? That's what I'm trying to find out. Because when you're coming down the driveway, you're driving into the front of the home?
Yes.
And then the driveway curves around to the side?
Right.
So, right, so they, essentially, there are panels on every face of the house. Okay. And my question then would be, are all of those panels necessary? Thanks.
I believe that'd be a question for the petitioner's representative. I'm sure there's a design that was sought in terms of the power it would generate, and so, again, if Ron's available, if you could step to the podium and maybe give a description of why the number of panels were chosen.
Okay, and I'd also just like to clarify that on this one drawing, if this is actually the front or if it's the side? Because I, you know, if it's wrong, I'd like to know, and if I'm wrong, I'd like to know. Thanks.
Again, the basis of the department's decision to determine that the panels were on the front of the dwelling is for all intents and purposes this view, because the front of the house is visible from the cul-de-sac.
If you want to, you can. I'm just going to show them the proposal and why we had to do what we had to do. Sorry, I'm just pulling up her proposal. Um, no, there's that proposal that shows her energy usage and everything on here, so I can show why we had to do what we had to do.
Mayor Boland?
While we're waiting on that, I have a question for the city attorney. Is it permissible to inquire as to the cost of the solar panel installation? And I'm asking because I may have another question depending, I may have a question depending upon the answer to that.
It really shouldn't be relevant to the P&amp;Z's consideration of this matter.
On this app that we have, I'm going to show you everything that's on there as far as her energy usage, as far as what it needs to take and give her an offset that would benefit her so that she would get away from AMUe.
Mayor Boland?
Well, I'll ask my question in any event. So, the, you mentioned that the petitioner was spending $1,600 a month?
Between $1,400 and $1,600 a month based on her energy usage. If you look at the bar graph on the screen that I'm showing you right now, the blue lines represent what she is actually using from AMUe, and the green lines represent what she can produce at this point. Due to the fact of all the trees that she has around her doesn't allow her to have a lot of sunlight projecting onto her roof. So therefore, based upon that, she's getting about a 43% offset where she's producing 43% and she'll be buying 57% from AMUe. Now, she trims back the lines, of course, the offset will go up a little bit higher where she'll be producing more energy for herself. Like I said, I can't really divulge cost as far as how many panels that are on there and what her total charges were, but as far as the panels itself, they charge about between $1,600 to $1,700 per panel that go on a roof.
So now I have another question before I go back to the earlier one next. You say cut back the lines. Are you talking about the tree lines?
Yes. So in other words, if she would trim her trees around her house to allow for sunlight to come into her yard, she would get a better offset which would lower her energy reliance on AMUe, and she would be able to produce more for herself.
But could also, I guess, have potentially the countereffect of making this more visible from the street?
Yes, it could.
Okay.
If she would deem that, this is what we've set forth before her and told her this is what we can do for her, and she says that's what she wants.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, my question earlier, which we don't need to get into cost to really ask this, I was just going to see whether, how relevant it might be, but my question is relative to her energy usage, and I know this isn't necessarily your field, you're in solar, but I guess I would have a question as to whether she's looked at other alternatives such as geophysical or geothermal heating and cooling, because I would assume that the lion's share of her cost relates to HVAC, and so, you know, are there other ways?
She also has a swimming pool, a hot tub, and it's a very large house with a lot of lights.
What is the square footage of the house?
I can't give you the actual square footage of there. I walked through the house. It is a very large house.
Okay.
Mr. Vunich, would it be possible to obtain a view from the neighbor's house crossed through the woods here, like a photo to identify what screening we have right now in January?
Certainly can. Mr. Newberry and I will go out and get some photographs of the adjoining property and, generally speaking, what that view from that adjoining property in the dwelling is onto this particular property and where the dwelling is located.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Given that the trustees, excuse me, trustees have not said anything about this project, I think we need to wait to hear from them before any action is taken.
It's a very good point, Commissioner Cohen, and the thought was, Mr. Newberry and I would not prepare the information report with the department's recommendation until we had received either something in verbal or written form from the homeowners association.
Commissioner Levitt?
This probably doesn't need to be said, but, well, I guess the one question we didn't have is what the color of these panels are going to be? And if I assume they're black, like most that we've seen, just from an aesthetic point, that green power box in the foreground of the picture, we will see more of that than the house from the road anyway.
When Mr. Newberry and I were reviewing the application, we recognized that the elevation change between the cul-de-sac and the home was substantial and that there was a heavily woodeded lot involved, but as you can see from the photograph, a portion of the roof line is visible, and so we thought it best to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The chair's comment about potentially adding some additional plantings in the vicinity of the driveway and then certainly ensuring that whatever is installed is done so as to camouflage it as best as possible are always goals of the department.
Seeing no further comments, we can close this. Or, well, too fast. Commissioner Gregg Nani?
Yes. The gentleman from the solar company had said that he had apprised the homeowner that if she were willing to cut down or trim up trees, that she would get a better return on her dollars spent. I guess, is she saying she's not going to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
I brought him in to trim around the backside of her house.
Okay, so as far as you know, she's not planning on cutting down any trees in wholesale fashion to, okay, I guess that would be a question that I would like for sure to know, that she's not going to go in there and just plow down a bunch of trees, but other than that, that's, that would be the only question I would have. Thank you.
Mayor Boland?
Well, and just to add to that, and I'm not an expert on this situation or an engineer in these matters, but it's my understanding that the tree canopy provides energy savings, and so, do you get into a circular pattern of defeatism when you cut the trees to get more use out of solar panels, but you have a hotter house, so you need more energy out of the solar panels?
And just to remind the Planning and Zoning Commission, in a recent application in the West Glen Farms subdivision, the department restricted the removal of the tree, which was ultimately authorized by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I think the past experience has been, we don't want wholesale removal of existing woodlands, but we understand a key removal or some trimming to accommodate the solar panels is often justified. At least that's what we were told the last go-round.
Seeing no other comments, we'll conclude this portion and move on to PZ 1-20. Mr. Newberry, we read that.
PZ 1-20, City of Wildwood Planning and Zoning Commission, care of Department of Planning, 16860 Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri 63040. A request for the review and recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission of various proposed amendments to the zoning regulations that are set forth in the Title IV of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wildwood made in conformance with state statute and to update various zoning regulations set forth therein. All wards.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight a memorandum relating to the codification of the Code of Municipal Ordinances of the City of Wildwood. As is identified in the memorandum, this effort has been ongoing for a number of months. It's a substantial task, given the number of ordinances associated with the city of Wildwood. All aspects of city government have been involved in the codification process. That includes the city attorney, council committees, and individual team members associated with the Code of Municipal Ordinances that are in place. The rationale for codification is often just simply that as ordinances are added and modifications are made to existing regulations, oftentimes, they aren't done verbatim or they aren't included in full part. Additionally, new ordinances are sometimes held until such time there are enough of them to send to the codification entity and therefore then included and is more cost-effective in that process. But what prompts all of this is often the same thing that we talk about relative to other code changes, more specifically to land use, changing directions, new trends, court cases, legal actions, et cetera. The city attorney has prepared, in association with the codification entity, a list of items that will eventually be presented to city council for consideration and action. Some of those changes relate to the city's land use code, and those are identified as Title IV, beginning on page 62. Some of the land use codes have no applicable changes that affect the Planning and Zoning Commission, but others do. And so therefore, for them to be finally acted upon by city council, the Planning and Zoning Commission is required to review, discuss, and make recommendation. So tonight, those items, beginning on page 62, relating to land use, particularly to the zoning ordinance, and concluding on page 71, are for the most part the primary focus of the public hearing. The city attorney, as I say, did the lion's share of the work in association with this codification effort. Mr. Newberry and I were given an opportunity to review the changes to the land use codes. Mr. Newberry found several. I found one or two, and now we, being the city attorney, Mr. Newberry, and I believe we have a comprehensive list for consideration by the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. With that, I would... With that, I would provide the opportunity for city attorney Young to provide any comments regarding the codification effort and any of the land use components before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Young.
Just at the 10,000-foot level, just to give you a concept of what the purpose of the recodification process is, typically when you codify your ordinances, every 10 or so years, you want to review just to do cleanup. And that's essentially what this is intended to be, cleanup, not substantive revision to any of the city's existing code. Just to clarify issues where the third-party provider, meaning the codification company, identified some lack of clarity or maybe errors in the language that existed to clean up those items. And that's what you have before you today as part of the overall recodification process.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Newberry, do we have any speaker cards? No. Discussion? Commissioner Helfry.
I have a question about, kind of how it's laid out. On chapter 410, where it says, "Tree Preservation and Restoration Requirements", it says in there, "This chapter was amended 2017 by ordinance number 2286." So would that ordinance be then printed in this spot? I mean, would it be there listed under tree preservation so that the information is there where it says? Or do you have to go then and look up the ordinance to find out what the tree?
Currently,
Thank you.
the online version of the zoning ordinance, or in this case, the tree preservation and restoration requirements, doesn't necessarily reflect the actions that were taken by the city relative to grand trees and other changes that were prompted at that time. So yes, with the codification or recodification, as the city attorney has coined it, that will be inserted into both the bound version as well as the e-code version.
Mr. Vunich, anything else?
Again, this is a required step. I understand that we have roughly 12 pages of changes. Some not necessarily in need of any change, more questions that were posed to the city attorney. But I would ask if there are any questions that arise prior to the preparation of the report by the department, please feel free to contact the department or our city attorney, and we'll be glad to address them as part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll... Can I get a recommend, or a motion to close this public hearing? Commissioner Helfry, second. Commissioner Simpson. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Extentions? Public hearing is closed. Yeah, I did, actually. Okay, moving on to new business. Mr. Vunich, looks like you're... Or no, Mr. Newberry.
I'll take that one. Thank you. The review and consideration of a request by Michael Kennedy dated January 13, 2020, KAI Design and Build regarding PZ 10-18, Wildwood Senior Apartments, the prime place at Wildwood. Amended C8 Plan Commercial District, Town Center Downtown District and Neighborhood General District, South Side of Main Street, West of Taylor Road, locator number 23V310383, street address 16700 Main Street, which requests the modification of the site-specific governing ordinance to allow for an additional 12 residential units, thereby increasing the total number from 48 to 60 within the single building, Ward 8.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich, when you're ready.
My apologies again to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It seems our technology is a little cantankerous tonight. I can't seem to enlarge this, but we'll do the best we can. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before the department begins its recommendation relative to this particular item, it would note that the petitioner, Mr. Kennedy, is in attendance tonight and is available to respond to comments and answer questions regarding this particular item. As many of the Planning and Zoning Commission members will recall, in 2018, a proposal was submitted on a parcel of ground directly east of the existing B&amp;B Theater. This proposal involved, at that time, a four-story building. The intent of the four-story building was to accommodate retail, commercial activity on the ground floor are at grade with Main Street and then residential units above. In association with that particular building, there was parking to be provided, stormwater management facilities, and public space. The building had a distinctive character. iPad would accommodate. And would anchor the corner of East Gate Lane and Main Street and certainly create a profile that's lacking at this location now. The petitioner ultimately returned to the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council, acknowledging that through their market studies and discussions with potential buyers, it appeared that at that time, they were seeking larger units, not smaller ones, and that based upon their mix from the initial petition, that they were not able to accommodate what they believed was his interest. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission was asked to accommodate a fifth story on the four-story building, and that fifth story would be, again, residential in nature. The outcome would be four stories of residential, thereby allowing for a greater mix of units in terms of overall size. With that presentation, the commission's favorable recommendation and city council action, the five-story building proceeded forward. Shortly thereafter, the petitioner installed the sales trailer on the property and began marketing the concept for the four residential units and the first floor commercial. Ultimately, the marketing process was not as successful as hoped, and further feedback indicated that actually smaller units would probably be more plausible to the community and therefore make the project successful from that standpoint. Mr. Kennedy, the petitioner, returned to the Department of Planning and requested the consideration of a 60-unit model versus a 48-unit model. Nothing would change in terms of the number of stories, the footprint of the relative building, or any of the stormwater management features beyond two-point. First, with additional units, additional parking must be provided. And the city's public space is premised on number of units, so again, public space would increase. And with more impervious surface due to parking, the stormwater would change slightly. Mr. Kennedy has provided a description of where additional parking would be placed, and it again is shown onsite and as part of an area that was originally the sideslope associated with the proposed bio-retention area. The department has reviewed the request and is recommending support of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would note that nothing in terms of the building's footprint and placement on Main Street and East Gate Lane would change. The impact on the theater would not change as well. And 13 additional parking spaces are proposed. The department believes that the interior components of this particular building are not inconsequential, but certainly not as important as the building itself and the mix of uses associated with it. There will be no change to the first floor, commercial in nature. And again, you will be adding 12 units to a building that, in the department's opinion, will provide a welcome addition to Main Street and the downtown district. A key element of all of this, too, is the unknown factor. And so the department is recommending that a cross-parking agreement be established between this particular site and the theater. The theater is in closer proximity to the parking garage, has more accessible spaces from an on-street standpoint as well, and therefore feels a slight park, slight sharing of parking spaces will ensure that this facility, as well as the theater, will be parked at an adequate ratio to serve the public. Therefore, again, the department is recommending the additional 12 units be authorized at this location, that the 13 spaces that are shown onsite be included, as well as a shared parking area between the theater and this site of no more than 20 spaces. Again, the petitioner is in attendance tonight. Thank you for your attention. And the department's available for any comments or questions regarding its draft report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mayor Boland.
So, just some preliminary thoughts on this. First of all, I definitely respect the entrepreneurial spirit and wanting to make a go of this development, and I appreciate the desire to want to invest in our city. And I know that, as I think your report mentioned, we already had one change, you know, with respect to adding another story to this proposed structure. I'm just a little concerned in two respects with this request. The first is, you know, with respect to what would presumably be a decrease in the square footage of the units, what effect that would have potentially on values of our residences and other properties in town center specifically, and potentially the city at large. And then my second reservation is, what I'm starting to sort of see is, you know, a change fundamentally, frankly, in the business plan as this thing is going forward. And I have been part of business plans, and I understand that you there, you know, you do have things that sometimes you need to change. But in this instance, it's just, these are, these are getting, I mean, the first one was large, and now we have another one. So I, I guess the concern generally is, you know, the business plan, and that's not something that I'm part of, but more fundamentally, I list those in priority. The first concern is the effect of decreasing the square footage and adding more units and what that could have. So I guess at this point, I'm not sure that it's something that I could support, but those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levitt.
I have a concern on the studies that were done as far as the desirable unit size. Unless I misunderstood, the original study showed a desire for larger units. And then after those didn't sell, a new study showed that the interest was greater for smaller units. What am I missing?
I think, at least from the department's perspective and what's been described to it, was how the marketing analysis were conducted, pre-approval, then post-approval. And pre-approval was done, I believe, more through traditional media, whereas post-approval, it was done onsite. And so I believe that through the availability of the onsite trailer, a representative being available to answer questions, and people being able to come to the property and see the plans, the renderings, that it became clear, at least to the petitioner, that at the price point, the 48 units were being offered, and the size, it was not going to be as successful as they hoped.
Thank you.
And certainly, Mr. Kennedy can speak to this probably in much more knowledgeable way than I. I'm just relaying some of the conversations that were held. It would require the permission of the chair to allow, I believe, Mr. Kennedy to come forward.
Mr. Kennedy, you want to present?
Thank you. Obviously, real estate development of this nature is not an exact science. And when we come into the planning facility like this, one of the key ingredients is the mix of units in the building. Do you have more three bedrooms and a few one-bedrooms? Or do you have more one-bedrooms and a few three-bedrooms? That mix is going to be driven by the market and what their needs or interests are. This change that we're talking about has not increased the square footage of the building. Our units that we got approved last time were all based on a cost per square foot. Our costs for the entire building and those, and our rents are all measured on that square footage basis. So in making this change, we are merely moving some of the spaces around inside the building to create more of the units that these, the market, the 125 people that came through that trailer have told us they would be interested in. Sure, everybody likes a big 1,700-square-foot three-bedroom. The Lutheran Senior Services over on Highway 64, they're building quite a few of them. I don't know the exact number, but I've seen their plans. I know their plans very well because our companies, the Carpentry Company, our Carpentry Company is building Mason Point. We have some 70 carpenters working on that project for the next two years. So I'm very familiar with their plans, but unfortunately, they're over there. We're over here, and Wildwood folks are not as affluent as the folks around Mason Point in Ladue and, um, Town and Country. So we had a little bit of an adjustment to recognize. And over the next, the last six months, as we sat there, understanding that, we realized that what the marketplace wanted and what people wanted to pay for was something not much smaller, because in fact, we only had to remove too many three-bedrooms and reduce them down to a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. And we got a great deal going here right now. We're not going to make any more money because we haven't increased the building's square footage. We're still, we've got the same amount of square footage. We've just changed around how much you're paying for it, because we've got more units at smaller sizes, but the same amount of revenue. So it's not going to do a lot for us in that regard. But I think it's going to do a lot for us in terms of attracting the market. Most people are interested in what we call a two-bedroom with a flexible second bedroom that can function as an office or a second bedroom. In this case, we've added a half-bath that we didn't have in the one-bedroom and, uh, and a half-bedroom. So we've got now a new, slightly different unit plan. But most of the amenities that we have in those units remain. We have more smaller kitchens than larger kitchens, but we've got more bathrooms. With 60 units, we've increased our cost a little bit with the additional kitchens and bathrooms. I don't know what else you'd like to know, but yes, sir.
To address-
Would you state your name, please? Would you state your name, please?
Ward Cone, Ward 3. I must, I am a joint venture partner with Mr. Kennedy, and the mayor brought up a point about business models and values, and one of the key components that triggered this change was the change from an entry-fee-type facility to rent-only. And without the entry fee, which we found out through market studies, was primarily done for, with non-for-profits like Lutherans, as you mentioned, doesn't work in the private sector. So, when you go to economy and make this thing economically feasible, we want to be competitive, we have smaller units, more units, and without the advantage or the thought that we had of entry fee to reduce costs, the only way this becomes economically feasible is to increase the number of units. And as for value to the city of Wildwood, the rents per square foot for a facility like this would be at least probably close to double, if not triple, that of what would be a traditional apartment building, as well as the quality and character of the construction. So, if anything, this would be an added value to the city of Wildwood. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to ignore your points, Mayor. I just couldn't figure out which, what was the question. I understood that you were stating your opinion, and if you have a question, I'll be happy to respond to it, if you have a question.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, unless you have a question.
No, I have a question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Vunich.
Am I correct in that they're going to need to come back with a revised site plan, then, for this?
Well, given their marketing efforts, they have yet to submit a site development plan. So, I think what the petitioner is attempting to do tonight is to finalize the unit count, address the parking, starboard, and public space components, and then finally submit a site development plan for consideration by the commission.
Okay, and my other question's related to the public space and the parking in, in that, he was, in, in the, the plan that we saw here where he had the squiggly line around the parking, the revision and around the detention basin where he's, or retention basin, he's adding parking spaces in that, and I was wondering whether that is part of the public space on this plan, or he's taking away from public space there, or is that why you're asking for the cross-parking agreement?
The department's request for cross-parking is more premised on personal experience and past experience, in that although many of the parking guides that planners and others depend on speak to certain parking ratios in multiple family units at one to one and a half spaces per unit, the department's experience has been that if there's two people in a unit, there's two cars. And so, we're not, the city is, the department is not requesting two spaces per unit, because there are those that will not need two spaces per unit. But it does believe that a parking ratio, a more robust parking ratio would benefit all parties. And again, Mr. Cone is part of this joint venture. There's been a discussion about sharing a certain number of parking spaces with the theater, which could be those dedicated for employees of the businesses, or those attending the restaurant that has been proposed to provide service to the residents, as well as the general public, et cetera. And so, how that works out, we'll certainly know in the future if this project proceeds. But to answer your question about public space, in our public space requirements, bio-retention is a credible public space component. It's a one-square-foot, one-square-foot-
That's what I was remembering.
So, although there'll be a reduction in the size of the bio-retention, there will be an offset somewhere due to the additional parking spaces or units.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cone.
I'd like to point your attention to the lower left-hand corner of the drawing, and you see a curb cut there that goes directly to the theater parking lot.
Chair Lee, a point of order.
Go ahead, Commissioner Levitt.
I'd like to suggest that, given that Mr. Cone is involved in this project, that he not take part in this discussion.
I wasn't going to vote anything, I was just going to voice an opinion, but if it's out of order, I will stop.
Would you, would you want to go to the podium and present?
I might defer that question to Mr. Young.
I would recommend abstaining completely from the process.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
He said he should abstain completely from the process.
Any further questions? Yes. Mr. Kennedy.
I think that what we should point out here is that we've had an intention of cross-parking with the theater, which is already shown in the diagram. I didn't know that, I didn't know that you hadn't noticed it, and if you did notice it, what we don't have, which Mr. Vunich has recommended, is a legal document that makes the parking of at least, I think it said in there, 20, 15 or 20 cars, I don't remember, maybe it's 20, and legally parking over there, and I don't know how you, how that's going to be done, but we can certainly be working on that over the next few weeks, try to figure out what that means. But an agreement allowing, and I'm sure we wouldn't need anything but the farthest south row of parking against the property line over the detention area. That, I can't, maybe I can't ask him, but that's all we would need.
Mayor Boland.
So, did I understand correctly, the, originally, there was going to be a fairly hefty security, I would always call a security deposit, that would be partially refunded, depending on how long, you know, the tenants stayed in the building, and that has, that's no longer the case, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then my second question, given the square footage change, if it's, if it's approved, what, what is the price point, as we sit here today, if it stays where it is, and what would the price point be if the change is approved?
Chair Lee, a point of order before we hear that answer.
Commissioner Levitt.
Once again, I'd like to say that the price of, or rental rate should be part of our decision-making process. It would suggest that the question be withdrawn.
Can it be asked? City Attorney.
The actual cost of the unit rentals is not relevant to the planning and zoning commission's consideration of this matter.
Well, with all due respect, we have a, we have a situation that anything we approve in this room relating to something like this is very relevant to the value of what our residents have invested in this community. So, I'll withdraw the question, but the point's made. Thanks.
Without specifically identifying the rental charges, the overall project, meaning from the building to the parking to the amenities associated with public space, is $27 million.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have any further comments?
No.
Good?
I'll-
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none. To clarify, Joe, we are basically making a revision to what we've already approved, which the exterior of the building footprint does not change, but the original approval identified 48 units, and this is going to 60, along with site plan and a cross requirement for a cross-parking agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, the major changes relate to an increase in the units by plus 12, and then if the increase in units is authorized, to establish a legal cross-parking agreement.
Commissioner Gregg-Ni.
Mr. Vunich, what was, when, when they reduced the number of units, did they, when they went to the, from the original plan that they came with, and then they said, oh, we're going to put more bigger units in there, how many, how many, how many did they take away at first?
None. It started out, the original petition identified 48 units-
They, they added a floor.
Added a floor.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
No problem, glad to help.
Mayor Boland.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to get at it this way. So, City Attorney, is it, Young, is it okay to ask whether the price point will be lower or higher if this is approved? I mean, without getting into numbers, is that a fair question? I mean, I know we've asked developers before what their, their price point is and how much they plan to charge for residences. So, I mean, can we get at it that way?
I would advise against it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
There is no motion on the floor at this time.
Commissioner Beatty, second? Mr. Newberry, roll call vote.
Commissioner Hofry.
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cone. Commissioner Gregg-Ni.
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Boland.
Yes.
Vote was eight to zero with one abstention, if you're wondering.
Sorry, I was wrong, it's seven to zero, one abstention.
Glad we checked. Seven to zero with one abstention.
My apologies.
Okay, moving on. Mr. Newberry, site development plans.
Recommendation of the Department of Planning to the Planning and Zoning Commission for PZ 32 through 34-16 Missouri American Water Company, MOAW, data collection units, DCU. Three of the remaining 19 approved conditional use permits for the placement of data collection units upon new and existing poles to be located within right-of-way and planned or private easement areas throughout the city of Wildwood in order to facilitate the collection of water meter usage. The site development plans for these identified data collection units consist of three new poles and have been authorized at the following locations. One, PZ 32-16, MOAW, DCU, ABGW, unit to be placed upon a new pole located within the eastern right-of-way of Woodlands Road, generally located adjacent to 3018 Woodlands Road, locator number 24X310104, at the following latitude and longitude. Latitude 38.568587, longitude 90 point, excuse me, negative 90.681172, Ward 1.
Number two, PZ 3316, MOAW, DCU, ABGV, unit to be placed upon a new pole located within the northern right-of-way of Hawk Mountain Road, generally located adjacent to 1920 Hawk Mountain Road, locator number 22Y310071, at the following latitude and longitude. Latitude 38.595167, longitude 90.709239. This particular pole is located in Ward 1.
Number three, PZ 34-16, MOAW, DCU, ABGS, unit to be placed upon a new pole located within the eastern right-of-way of Hart Farms Road, generally located adjacent to 2312 to Hart Farm Road, locator number 23Y520105, at the following latitude and longitude. Latitude 38.588474, longitude minus 90.710842, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich. Commissioner Levitt.
Just a question, what you read on number three, is it Hart Farm or Farms? Because both are written here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight a recommendation report regarding the last three data collection facilities being proposed by Missouri American Water Company. As the Planning and Zoning Commission members may recall, over the course of approximately two years, almost 30 of these locations were approved by the city of Wildwood. The first 11, that grouping, were the installation of the equipment on existing vertical improvements owned by St. Louis County emergency sirens. Thereafter, the petitioner proposed 19 locations, 16 of which were generally in public right-of-way areas or on property owned by the petitioner, Missouri American Water Company. Three locations, however, were to be installed on private roadways where public easements existed. Again, it's important to note that when subdivisions are submitted for consideration and plating, the Department of Planning, per the subdivision and development regulations, requires the establishment of utility easements to the benefit of all utilities, whether providing service or for future service. These three locations are those instances where the private roadway is in a easement for that purpose, and that easement is also intended for utility installations. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not act upon these three locations to allow the petitioner additional time to reach out either to the property owners in the vicinity of the pole, the homeowners' association, which manages the subdivision, and the public, excuse me, the private street, or both. Since that action, the petitioner has been attempting to obtain the conversation and the action of the property owners. And in the table provided, the property owner or representative is identified, the letter dates that were submitted to that individual, that representative- dates that were submitted to that individual, that representative, the email dates, if the alternative, or the site visit that was conducted. To date, the petitioner has been unable to obtain a agreement. And it is not the intent of the department by bringing this particular request forward with the three locations to circumvent the intent of the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, in the course of now almost two years, the petitioner has been unable to complete the process. The department believes that the site development plans are compliant to the permits that were granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. What the department would like to do is complete the site development plan process and then work together with the petitioner to receive those approvals. It notes in its draft recommendation report that we would reach out to those three entities itself, request if it can provide any assistance in this regard, and certainly try to bring the parties together and reach a successful conclusion regarding this particular matter. Now, the Planning and Zoning Commission may ask, well, what if the individual says, I don't want it there? Well, in the context of the location, certainly the petitioner, Missouri American Water Company, has created specific sites for the purpose of maximum coverage and redundancy. So if it shifts a few feet one way or the other, or is placed near a tree or some other coverage, then that would be within the context of the site development plans before you. If the location were to change completely, then obviously that would be returned to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration. So tonight, the department is noting that the plans as submitted do comply with the permits granted by the city. The department is wanting to complete that planning component of the permit, but it is stating clearly that the petitioner will have an opportunity then to reach out to the representatives, and the department will do the same to basically complete the process. So tonight, the department is presenting the three site development plans for action. I would note representatives of the Missouri American Water Company are in attendance and can explain the steps they've taken, as described in the table, to complete the commission's wishes. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll conclude the department's presentation, and if there are any question or comments, please feel free to ask them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Mr. Young, I have a question for you. How can we move forward with a site development plan if we don't have the documents that we need to either create the easement or an agreement to be on private property?
There is an easement. There's a general utility easement that Missouri American Water Company has rights to. It was established at the time of the subdivision, long before any of the lots were sold.
So the, so the poles are located on an easement?
Yes. If they are not within an easement, then obviously an easement would need to be created, and that would require the participation and concurrence of the property owner.
Commissioner Helfry.
So my first question is, are all three of these poles on private property?
Yes. The easement overlays private property.
Okay, so in my opinion, when you have an easement for utilities on your property, I'm guessing that nobody thinks about a big pole going up in the front of their house or in that easement. When I look at this chart about the contacts, the most current contact or attempted contact is five months ago. Prior to that, the most current contact was five months before that. So I'm looking at a letter sent maybe twice in 10 months, and I don't feel that that is a very adequate attempt at trying to get a hold of these homeowners and to come to some understanding with them. So I personally don't feel that I would be able to support going forward with this until a valiant effort is made to reach these homeowners and get their approval and speak with them. That's my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mayor Boland.
Joe, in that regard, what is it you were looking for the commission to do this evening on this?
To act favorably on the plans, but with that caveat that the petitioner continued to work with the parties to ensure they understand the location and if there are minor adjustments, make those, while also allowing the Department of Planning with the city to reach out to them as well.
So relative to Commissioner Helfry's point, would it be an issue if there was a postponement of this to the next meeting to allow some of that additional notice and interaction with the property owners that could be affected to occur?
Certainly, the department can prepare its letter. It can reach out to the individuals identified on the chart, but it would ask for four weeks.
Okay. I'd make a motion to postpone for four weeks for that to occur.
Commissioner Levitt, second? Commissioner Helfry.
And I would request that, that when we get a response from the homeowners, that it's in writing from the homeowner and not a form letter from Missouri American Waters.
And again, when the department prepares its letter and delivers it to the impacted representatives, it'll ask for their responses to be in writing, and that will, hopefully that's what will be provided, and that will then be submitted to the commission.
Commissioner Simpson.
So my question is, what if they don't respond? And maybe a suggestion that it be a registered letter that they have to sign for?
They've already sent certified.
Oh, certified, okay.
Yeah, if you looked at this.
Yes, so, oh yeah, certified, okay. But it's, but it was returned, so did they not pick it up?
We run into this with some of our enforcement letters. Some people are aware when they see, receive a certified or registered letter from a government, it's usually not good news, and so they won't pick it up. And so in this case, it's not a confrontational effort. If the department needs to go and knock on doors, it'd be glad to do that. We're so close to completing the network and moving on to the final stage, which is the sharing of certain internet poles the city owns with Missouri American Water Company, that I'd like to think we can address the three property owners' needs as well as the homeowners association and do it in a cooperative manner. So we will ask for a return in writing, and like I say, I'll send the letter, I'll provide contact information, and I'll be glad to meet with the individuals to address their concerns as well.
Thank you.
I will defer to one of the representatives from Missouri American Water Company if the commission and chair were to allow.
Speech, your name, and address for the record.
My address? Okay. The company address? My name is Matthew Leaders. I'm an engineering manager with Missouri American Water. The company address is 747 Craig Road, Creve Court, Missouri, 63141. Your question on that letter, so often residents don't necessarily want to draft everything entirely on their own and don't know proper verbiage, and so that letter is a recommendation. This is what we're thinking. We had a very good working relationship with Mr. Curry. Mr. Curry actually came to Planning and Zoning and spoke on our behalf during a meeting on record, but that wasn't in writing. The previous request from Planning and Zoning was to get letters in writing to show support for these locations. We have several others, and we've worked with residents to purchase easements to locate, to move off of right-of-way where it's appropriate, and we've worked very hard to come to good locations with all of the residents. In these two, in the case of ABGV and ABGS, we've had good working relationships with both of these organizations, but when it came to time to get a letter from them, silence. So I, I do not know what more to do on that. We've reached out to them, called them, you know, at a later point, started sending certified letters so that we can show this paper trail. You know, we've met on site visits with Mr. Curry and discussed where the location would be, how it would be installed, and, you know, and I don't know what to say as far as why we are no longer able to contact him. But, you know, I mean, if I can pull up, you know, the video, I know that's not in writing, but of the previous approval that he's had, we've worked very diligently to work with the city and the residents to find good locations for these. Be happy to continue to do so. I just don't know what the endpoint is, to complete this project and to deliver this for our customers, if they simply will not respond, and it prevents some of the benefits of the system to other residents nearby in that situation. And if there are any questions, I know there were several up there, and I wasn't able to track each one, but I'd be happy to answer any questions on the system, these locations, or the history behind these communications, or the process that we've gone through, which has been thorough with the city of Wildwood.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Vunich, I have a request of your comment. As this document, the presentation document, does not identify right-of-way or utility easements, is there a way that we can have those shown and identified where they are in relation to these tracts of land as this comes back in four weeks, if we move forward? Because that will impact where the actual poles can be placed.
Yes, and the department would just first state, certainly will ask the Missouri American Water Company to define the full width of the easement. All three of these locations were platted by St. Louis County, and so the right-of-ways in all of these instances are 50 feet in width. The city of Wildwood only requires 40 feet at this time. So what the aerial photography indicates is basically the boundaries of the property line, which usually reside in the center of the 50-foot-wide easement. So there's 25 feet on either side of that center line, but we'll have that depicted on an image or a plan sheet so you can see it clearly.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Helfry.
Travis, can you please repeat what the motion is that we're voting on?
I have a motion to postpone for four weeks to allow the department and the petitioner time to work with the three property owners.
I think it was just for information, I think it was to, I don't know if it was to work with them, but to at least notify them again because of the five-month lapse.
Thank you.
But if that includes working so much, the better.
That will be my intent, sir.
Voice, vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Actions postponed.
Mr. Chair, that's all we have on the agenda tonight, so thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Simpson. Second by Commissioner Helfry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.